Okay. Good afternoon, the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, September 11th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Roll call please.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Coops.
Here.
Mayor Santenes.
Here. Okay, next item, item number three, closed session item, Mr. Stewart.
One item tonight, it's conference legal counsel initiation litigation, and it is one case.
Okay. Does anyone have any conflicts on this single item?
Yes, I have a conflict mayor with property within 500 feet.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, let the record reflect that councilmember Dutton is recusing himself on item three. Three A, with that, we're going to go into closed session. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, September 11th, 2023, 5:30, 7:00 PM. Back to open session, we are reconvening from closed session, and like to report there's no action taken during the closed session. Roll call please.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Coops.
Here.
Mayor Santenes.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by myself, and the pledge allegiance will be led by Mr. Jim Delalonga, the Director of Economic Development. Please rise. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, and the gift of community. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us wonderful staff, wonderful residents. We thank you for giving us our members of our military, our first responders. As we commemorate September 11th, 22 years ago, we remember those brave men and women who died in New York. Please keep them in your prayers, please keep their families. And also as we gather today, please remember those, and we pray for those who are ill, who are unemployed, or homeless, who are all suffering. Please give them the comfort they all deserve. As we gather tonight to discuss the matters before us, please enlighten us, guide us, and give us the wisdom to decide what is best for our city. We ask all this in your mighty name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Delalonga. Let me start with the City Council announcements. Tickets for the 2023 Bellflower State of the City presentation are still available for purchase. The State of the City presentation provides an overview and update on the city's recent accomplishments and future goals. I'm very excited to share the wonderful progress that we've made this past year and what is to come. The presentation will be held on Thursday, October 5th, 2023, at 11:30 AM at the Main Event Center. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Mayor Protem Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at the August 28th City Council meeting, a vacancy exists on the City Council due to the resignation of former Mayor Protem Ray Hamada. To be appointed to the City Council, you must be a registered voter residing in District Number One in the city of Bellflower at the time of submitting your application packet, and must remain an elector and resident of District One in the city while serving on the council. Interested parties will be required to complete an application packet that will be considered by the City Council. The application packet will require a completed application with a statement of qualifications attached with a statement of economic interest. The deadline to apply for the City Council District Number One is tomorrow, Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 5:00 in the evening. If you have any more information needed for details, visit www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Coops. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join the next monthly morning mingle, which will take place Tuesday, September 26th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. At the Chamber office located at 16730 Bellflower Boulevard, for more information, please call Bellflower, the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower is thrilled to announce the creation of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This parking plan effort will be provide the modern vision for the parks and recreation system here in Bellflower. The plan will provide guidance and future improvements in the development of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The city is committed to making the planning process a collaborative effort and wishes to engage the community through a series of public workshops, and also surveys, online maps, and other meetings to gather feedback for this wonderful plan. For more information, please visit the website of www.bellflowerparksplan.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Tonight, we have two wonderful presentations. The first one is Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation, and the second one is Pedestrian Safety Month Proclamation. For the first one, we have invited Mrs. Sandra Espinoza Perry to receive the proclamation, and on the second presentation, we've invited Ms. Carla Carver, a crossing guard at Clark Avenue and Laurel Street. So we'd start with the Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. Like to invite my colleagues to the riser, and also Mrs. Espinoza. I'd like your family to be ready to take as many photos as you can, okay? Don't be shy. So I'm gonna disappoint Mayor Protem Coops. No, I will not. I will not. I'd like to highlight a few whereas's here. This is, the city of Bellflower proclaims Hispanic Heritage Month. Their two lines here, to me, are very, very compelling. One is, the first one is, whereas it is recognized Hispanics had a profound and positive influence on Bellflower, providing diversity while enriches the community and is strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. And the second whereas is, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month demonstrates the unity and diversity of Hispanics from around the world, will celebrate their colorful and distinct culture, which includes people from roots in Latin America, countries throughout North, Central, and South America. So, the Bellflower residents are encouraged to make Hispanic Heritage Month this time a rededication to the principles of unity, respect, and trust for the betterment of our community. So now therefore, I, Sunny Arantainas, Mayor of City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month. Sunday, Mayor Sunny Arantainas, Mayor Protem Dan Coops, Councilmember Ray Dutton, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. So tonight, we'd like to present this proclamation to Mrs. Sandra Espinoza Perry. She's been very active in the community, and one of the things that she'll be, she was organizing together with her husband, is the trip to Los Moches coming up very soon. This is an exchange program with our sister city in Los Moches in the province of Sinaloa. So thank you so much for all you do for our community. I'd like to say a few words.
I wanna say thank you to my beautiful city residents and to my friends who came tonight, my wonderful husband that always supporting whatever I'm doing for my, I call it my beautiful city because that how it is, a beautiful city. So, thank you all, and it's a great honor to receive this recognition. Thank you.
Would you like a photo with your family?
Yes.
With us? Okay, come on. Whoever's, come on up here.
Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you so much. All right, for the next presentation, we'd like to invite Ms. Carla Carver. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna embarrass you tonight, okay? All right, all right. Ms. Carver is a very dedicated crossing guard, and every time I go to, every time I go to Uncle Bud's, when I have breakfast, I watch her. She is very dedicated, very loving when she, when she guides the children across the street on Laurel Street. And it's just, I would describe that she gives her 100% to make sure that the kids are safe. You know, sometimes, especially in the mornings, especially also in the afternoon, when parents drop off their kids and pick up their kids in the afternoon, some parents are just, I would say, crazy. They're crazy, okay? It's just amazing what Ms. Carver does.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next time you, you're in duty, take a look at Uncle Bud. I'm there.
I'll go in there and eat.
Okay, so tonight, tonight also, we're proclaiming this month as the Pedestrian Safety Month, and as you know, the, our crossing guards are very critical in providing safety to our schoolchildren. So, I'd like to just read a couple of lines here, again, not to disappoint Mayor Protem Coops. These are, these are very critical. Whereas, as we're all pedestrians from time to time, it's important to pay attention to what is going on around us, and drivers must remember that crosswalks exist at every intersection, and be diligent to ensure the safety of pedestrians, especially our schoolchildren. Whereas, drivers and pedestrians must work together to demonstrate safe behaviors on the road, helping to protect themselves and those around them. So now therefore, I, Sunny Arantainas, Mayor of City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Pedestrian Safety Month, and urge all, all others to rededicate themselves to enjoying the benefits of walking and ensuring the safety of pedestrians in our community. Signed, Mayor Sunny Arantainas, Mayor Protem Dan Coops, Councilmember Ray Dutton, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
I appreciate you guys and for knowledge, man. It's proud to be here tonight. I'm a little shy with this, though.
Oh, okay, okay. What time do you get up in the morning?
I get up at six, five, different times.
And then what do you finish your, what time do you finish your shift?
I go there at seven, excuse me.
Until what time?
Seven to 7:45, and I leave and come back.
And your shift at 7:45?
Different hours, but sometimes I get out early, you know.
Oh, okay. But when the school starts, you basically leave already, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's about nine, eight, eight thirty?
It's not, it's not.
Eight thirty, eight thirty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, very good. And I'd like you to go to the podium.
But I wanted to share with you that I crossed the street where this lady works when I was in kindergarten. That was 1956.
Oh, yeah.
And Clark Street had no drains under, and they would put us on a cart to push it across the flooded Clark Street, and that's how we got there. But I have a certain respect for all of you crossing guards that change and make our safe, our city safer. But I just wanna, you know, we've been having crossing guards for a long time, but I go back to 1956, 1955, and I'm just, it's fun to be able to have the legacy of a crossing guard at that place for 70 years, right? That's all I have. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much. So Carla, you can go to the, I have something. Well, I was just gonna think of something. Again, thank you so much for coming to this presentation. You get up around, around, around 8:45, nine, nine o'clock? What time does your shift in the morning end? 8:45. Mr. Stewart.
Public comments?
No, no, no. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'd like to, because I really want to show my appreciation to the crossing guards. I'd like to invite all crossing guards for breakfast. So if you can connect with the, with our contractor, maybe sometime next, in two weeks, we can arrange, after your shift ends, I'd like to invite all the crossing guards, okay, for breakfast. And that's gonna be my personal treat to you. Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Stewart, public comments?
We don't get to go to breakfast? No, sorry.
You gotta find the crossing guards.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council.
All right, if you're speaking on a non-agenda item, please come up. You have 10 minutes, please sign in and state your name for the record. Is the mic on? Nope, not for the, it's being recorded.
Not sure what happened there, but we do really appreciate the yellow flashing lights. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, you're very welcome, Ms. Palacios.
Hello, Council. My name is Steve Tamer. I, I live off of Ripon and Flora Vista, right next to Corruthers Park. Actually, my house faces Corruthers Park, and great area, lived there for about five years now. I've been in Bellflower since I was a kid, so I'm really happy to have had the opportunity to buy a house there and live in that community. Lately, unfortunately, things have, like everywhere else, I know it's not just, you know, specific to our city, but things have kind of been a little bit on the downturn, a little bit on the decline. Trash, a lot are on the adjacent streets, it seems to be a constant frequent problem. The people that work at the park definitely go around, it's much appreciated, and pick up what they can, but I don't know, maybe some extra trash cans, I'm not sure what would help there, but that's one item. But this weekend in particular, I don't know if you guys are aware, maybe you aren't, or you're not, you may be, but Friday night, we had a drunk driver come through and on the corner of Chicago and Flora Vista, hit the curb, and then proceeded over several residents' driveways and lawns, and miraculously missed a pole, missed cars, and police were not quick to show up, and by the time they did show up, he was already gone. He hung around for about 15 minutes, and he was there. This gentleman was there, and he hung around for about 15 minutes. Unfortunately, by that time, the gentleman got into his car with the flat tire and made it out of the neighborhood. On Saturday night, we had a concert at the skate park, an unofficial concert. There was about maybe 200 people there, rock concert with pyrotechnics and stuff. I have a video, if you guys wanna see it, but police were called, they did show up, they asked everybody to leave, they cussed at them a few times, and eventually they left. And the worst event happened last night, so three days in a row now. Last night, there was a shooting at the park. They were about 8:00 PM, there was maybe a group of about 50 people or so, looked very gang-oriented. There was graffiti on the walls, and about 8:20, there were several shots on View Park Street, and they were facing towards the park, and they were shooting towards the park. There were about 17 shells found in front of a house, two cars got hit, parked cars. So I just, I know public safety, like I said, I know it's happening everywhere, just wanted to see what we can do. In the past, I've chimed in, you know, I've listened to the meetings all the time, and we talk about increasing budget for police, and, you know, tiki-tack tickets came up and say, hey, I don't wanna get a stop sign ticket, and stuff like that, and I think, you know, we can look over past that stuff. I think we need a little bit, maybe more of a presence. I don't know if it's a budget thing, just asking for some help. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And, Mr. Stewart, in the, in the current budget, we added one, one car?
We added one car, and we added, the motorcycle continued, and we added the map unit as well. And right now, as you know, we're having a trouble filling those positions, the Sheriff's Department shortage, but we're working on it.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanna emphasize that in the current budget, we added one motorcycle cop and then one, one car, but unfortunately, because of the shortage in staffing for the LA County Sheriff's Department, those positions could not be filled, so, but we are trying, gonna try to find some other solutions to address this issue.
We'll fill them, it just hasn't happened yet.
All right.
My name is Michael.
Can you sign, did you sign?
Yeah, I signed in.
Okay, thank you.
I live at one of the residences that this previous gentleman was talking about, with the car driving through our lawn. Yeah, it's non-stop. I've had to stop policing the park myself because of threats of, you know, just danger in general. Every time I called the police, takes over an hour for them to get here, but then there's graffiti, and we have the whole park flanked with four, seven, up to seven police cars, a helicopter flying around for over two, like an hour, until 2:00 in the morning. We have our public security, right? The white cars drive around. All I ever see them do is write tickets for parked cars. You guys need to, like, tighten up, dog. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
I'm gonna talk about the street fest again, but I was on a Zoom call with three women I'm gonna be cruising with in November, and one of them lives in Cypress, and I guess at our last Zoom call, I had mentioned the street fest. When I talked to her the other day, she said she had come to the 90's night. She had nothing but positive, wonderful things to say about what Bellflower does, how they had it set up, just the overall experience. She told me she really hopes we do it again next year, 'cause her kids want to come. She's dying to come back, and, and I thought I'd let you know that she lives in Cypress, and she came, and her kids live out that way, and they're all really looking forward to it. She just thought the city of Bellflower was the most wonderful thing, and of course, I have to agree, but I just, I wanted to let you know that it's not just our residents that are enjoying what we do here.
Okay, thank you so much, Cheryl. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Item. We have no public hearings tonight. There are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration. The next item is item 13A, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is consideration of possible action to set a public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendment case number ZODA 23-01, and conditional use permit number CU 23-01, and Ms. Oba has a brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. For some background on this item, we received an application from Roger Graham, representing JRF Collision, which is an auto repair business in town. The application was for a zoning ordinance text amendment to change the BMC requirement to reduce the minimum distance between auto repair shops, and also an application for a conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop and a spray booth within an existing building located at 9638 to 9648 Artigia Boulevard. On August 7th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the ZODA and the CUP. The commission recommended denial of both the ZODA and the CUP to the City Council. In the staff report and at the public hearing, staff informed the commission it was acting as an advisory body to the City Council only, and that its action for approval or denial would be a recommendation to the Council. This information was actually incorrect, and commission's action for denial of the ZODA and CUP should have been final unless appealed to the Council. This was an inadvertent staff error, and to address this and allow the applicant the opportunity for his item to be heard by the City Council, it's recommended the City Council set a public hearing for September 25th, 2023. So again, the recommendation this evening is the City Council set a public hearing for ZODA 23-01 and CU 23-01 for September 25th, 2023, or alternatively, take, discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oba, for your presentation. After the, the Planning Commission meeting, I received a couple of phone calls about the conduct of the meeting, and so I dug deeper into the proceedings of the meeting, and I called Ms. Oba about what happened during the meeting. And during our conversation, I got so confused with the way the votes took place in the first place, that I had to write down how it came about, and then only then that I was able to kind of follow what transpired during the meeting. I do not question the, the decision of the Planning Commission, but what I'm questioning is the process that, that was undertaken to come up with the decision. And especially now that staff's saying that they gave the wrong recommendation or direction to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission's decision would have been final unless it was appealed to the City Council. So it seems like, it seems like everything just kind of went wrong during the process, from the recommendation given to the Planning Commission, the way the staff were conducted the, the, the proceedings, and then how the, how the commission handled their job, it was just, it was just so confusing. And when I look at the minutes eventually, it was, honestly, it was, it was very painful to look at what transpired during the meeting. And at the same time, I want to, I want to give the applicant due process. So my question to staff and our, to City Attorney is, instead of the recommendation to set the hearing, public hearing, at the City Council level, can we remand this item back to the Planning Commission so that they can fix whatever, whatever went wrong? Because I want to fix, if it's done wrong incorrectly in the Planning Commission, if there's an opportunity for them, I'd like them to fix it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, you do have the ability to remand the matter back to the Planning Commission with directions in terms of how to fix it, if that's what you would like to do.
Okay, and how does this affect the due process for the applicant?
The, as was mentioned by, in the staff presentation, it was really a final decision by the Planning Commission, so, if you will, this is a additional opportunity for the, for the applicant to make their case before the Planning Commission in terms of what the Planning Commission should do. So I think the due process issue is handled. First of all, the City Council's considering the matter right now, so that's an additional step beyond what is provided for in the municipal code.
so that's an additional step beyond what is provided for in the municipal code. And if the council decides to remand it back to the Planning Commission, that's a second bite at the apple for the applicant in front of the Planning Commission. So from a due process standpoint, I think you're, you're clear.
Okay, okay.
Right, and as the city manager points out, if the Planning Commission makes a decision that is objectionable to the applicant, it can once again appeal it to the City Council for a final decision.
Right, okay. All right, that's good. Any comment from City Council? Questions?
And I believe what, and I saw what you saw, the confusion and staff admits that the conclusion drawn was not appropriate for what transpired. I would be in favor of the applicant receiving the benefit of the doubt to present again.
Okay, all right. Does it ever done?
Yeah, that's, seems the way to go, because early on, I questioned it, the planning being advisory. I just didn't understand why, because I'd never kind of seen that before.
Mm-hmm.
But knowing from all levels, staff, commission, and the way the meeting was handled in general, redo would be fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, I, um, I looked into it too as well. Um, my initial, uh, question that I would ask is how quickly can they get it back to the Planning Commission? Being mindful of the applicant's time and being, you know, that saying, right? Time is money, you know? I just want to be mindful of that. If it's not going to go into October, if it's not, or not going to go into November, not going to go into December, that, that would be my one thing.
Okay.
Just.
Ms. Corpus, do you have any ideas in terms of timing?
Yes, it's, it's a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, so we would have to provide, um, notification, and that's a ten-day lead time. Um, the earliest we can get it back to the Planning Commission is October second.
Okay.
Could, when, when was it going to come back to us, just for clarification?
September twenty-fifth.
September twenty-five, so it's about a week, a week late?
About the twenty.
And we could hold a special meeting. We just have to make sure we notice it appropriately, and that special meeting could happen, uh, the week of September twenty-fifth.
Hmm, okay.
Maybe the twenty, twenty-six or something?
Right, because the twenty-fifth is the council meeting.
Yeah, we're in this area and then the.
So we can do it the next day for the Planning Commission?
Yes, that's possible.
Unless, unless the applicant can wait until October. You said October second?
October second. That's our, our regular scheduled meeting.
So that would be this quest, question to the applicant.
Yeah, I could, that's fair.
All right.
The applicant in the audience, if you wanted to ask.
Yes, yes, I'm going to ask him, yeah. Any other question?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, just add one other thing. The Planning Commission's decision with regard to not advancing a recommendation to the City Council is final, but of course, one of the things in front of this Planning Commission is whether or not to adopt new zoning regulations, right? That is a City Council decision. So let us just say hypothetically that the Planning Commission were to make that recommendation to the City Council. That is a final decision, but then the City Council still has to act upon it. So I guess my point is, there's one additional opportunity for the applicant to come in front of the City Council to plead their case.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, good. Uh, any public comments, applicant? You've heard the discussion here?
Yes, that is correct. My name is Jose. Um, I am one of the representatives representing JRF Collision Center, Mr. Danny Frichette. Um, if only a few questions that we have is, we projected to go to the council to present the item on, if we voted for it on the twenty-fifth of this month. But now it seems to be, we're going to go back to the Planning Commission until October second, which.
Or, 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 you didn't hear, or a special meeting of the Planning Commission on, uh, September twenty-sixth?
So we go September twenty-sixth on a Tuesday. What happens if the item gets rejected from the Planning Commission? Then I would have to go ahead and appeal to the, to your board, which will go ahead and.
To the council?
To the council, which will be another three weeks just to prepare, and then get ready for public comment, which was kind of put us closer to the last week of October, first couple of weeks in November?
Anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me just be clear. Right now, the, the recommended action before the mayor's observations on the matter are to set a public hearing in front of the City Council. City Council has no obligation to have any timing with regard to the public hearing because this was an appeal brought by the city manager's office in front of the City Council. Uh, I think it's, the mayor's original observations are entirely appropriate under the circumstances, and it's giving the applicant an additional opportunity to plead their case in front of the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission to do the right thing, one way or the other, um, based upon the procedural requirements of the municipal code. So the question about timing is, right now, the issue is dead. City Council has no obligation to do anything at the moment. Uh, the Planning Commission's decision right now stands. And so it is in an abundance of caution that the city manager's office brought this in front of the City Council at all. Uh, so the timing issue is a little bit of a red herring.
Okay. Did you hear the, City Attorney's comment? Okay, so basically, if we don't take any action tonight, then the, the commission's, well, it was, it was advisory, though.
As I'm hearing it tonight, you're looking at remanding it back to Planning Commission, which is totally your right to do so. There's nothing, the, the council's on the hook for nothing unless the council, unless the commission takes action whenever they have that meeting next. So to talk about what the council's going to do next is totally preliminary. So we, the next step is to get before the commission, let the commission do what it does, and then you're, you're, you'll be clear what you need to do after that when they reconsider the item.
Okay, understood.
So I guess my question to you is, would October second acceptable to you? Or do you want a special Planning Commission, no, given the choice?
The special Planning Commission will be fine. Um, if I need to amend the application, can I do that?
Well, okay, so now we've got, this is another issue entirely. So the application that was considered for the commission, you can bring it back. They're remanding that application back to the commission. If you want to amend it, we can start the clock again and go a different way, because now you're looking at a different set of facts that we have to identify and go forward with. And I think you know that. I mean, you're a planner in another city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that question, you already knew the answer to. Okay.
I guess you cannot have it both ways.
Yeah.
You want to go forward or you want to go back to the drawing board? Go ahead, Ms. Corpus.
Mayor, if I can ask something? I do know that at least one of our planning commissioners has a conflict. Um, I do know this person's out of town for a couple of weeks at the end of September to the beginning of October. So if we do schedule it for the twenty-sixth or the October second meeting, we may be running at a four-person Planning Commission.
And we don't want to do that, based on.
So the direction would be to schedule as soon as you can before the Planning Commission. Well, would do.
So we'll schedule as soon as we can, because we want to make sure that we have five commissioners, because looking at the votes, it's kind of risky to make.
But if you're going to amend, if you're going to amend it, you're going, we're going to start the clock again, and you could get delayed, just FYI, I don't know what the significance is.
Um, I, I think it's best for us to amend, just because the buffer that we was originally presenting to the commission was, was not unfavorable for both us and the city, so we'll go ahead and amend the application and resubmit.
Correct.
So basically, start from scratch.
Yes, just for the benefit of the whole city.
All right.
That said, it's going to go back to the council, which I think the recommendation's going to be that they would schedule it as soon as possible. So we're not going to commit to a date depending on what the, the amendment is to your application.
Correct.
Okay, well, the City Attorney just said if you're amending it, you're withdrawing the application, refiling the application. Is that what you intend to do?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. So the clock's going to start again.
So we don't have to remand anymore?
You don't have to do anything.
This is a receivable file then.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be correct.
All right. That makes it easier for all. All right. Is there a motion to receivable file?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Coop, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to receivable file, thirteen A. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, moving along, consent calendar, item fourteen. Is there any recusal, any conflicts?
Mr. Mayor, I will be out on fourteen D because I have property adjacent to the project.
Oh, okay, but by the way, on fourteen D, we have two conflicts?
Mr. Dutton?
I was trying to get at it. And, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, got conflict with fourteen D due to a property with, uh, within five hundred feet.
All right, so we're going to draw?
Yeah, whatever the city clerk says.
Okay, city clerk?
Yes, we will need to conduct a random drawing to see who will participate in fourteen D. Um, I have the names of the conflicted council members, Mayor Protem Coops. Okay, and Councilmember Dutton?
Got it correctly.
Nice print.
Okay.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I won't make you choose, I will choose. Okay, and Councilmember Dutton will participate in the item.
Would you like for me to leave the room?
Well, unless somebody pulls the item, you don't have to.
All right, well, sometimes I'm out in the foyer.
All right, does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar? There being none?
Oh, this kid.
You do the same thing? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilmember Coop, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to approve the consent calendar, noting that, um, uh, Councilmember Dutton was selected to participate in item fourteen D. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, council reports, uh, Councilmember Dunn?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll take a quick moment to just congratulate, um, Mr. Travis Seis on what we just voted on on fourteen F. Congratulations. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Coops?
I wanted to report that, uh, the City Council had an invitation to do the coin toss at Saint John Bosco High School football game on Friday night. So all of us attended, and our mayor did a proud job of tossing the coin. And it was a kind of a neat deal, be able to go out there and, uh, participate on number one ranked ba, football team in the nation and to be a part of that festivity. And they treated us grand, and they had a parking place for us, they had a place to sit. Uh, they directed us where to go. Uh, my hat's off to the quality of the Saint John Bosco Football Organization and the entire school. It was really a cool evening. I want to thank Jerry Troutman for putting it together and the entire school for inviting our City Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem Coops. I just want to piggyback on what Mayor, Mayor Protem Coops said about the football game. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised, uh, to see them as the national, national champion again this year. The way they played last Friday, I mean, this was, uh, an amazing team. And also, congratulations to Deputy, uh, Mayor Travis Seis. Uh, we expect more from you going forward. Okay, okay, yeah. And, and just a reminder, please, uh, if you have an opportunity, to please thank our crossing guards, because they are really doing a good job in our city in providing safety to our children. So just say thank you to them whenever, whenever you have an opportunity. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty P M. on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this meeting is now adjourned.